Let me share it. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, do you want me to go ahead and proceed on this item?
We're starting from the top, absolutely. Go right ahead.
All right. All right. So first off, we had the discussion and considerations for the Public Works Building. This is something that we talked about now for several years, getting a building in place for them. We solicited quotes from a number of different contractors. And based off of that, we spec'd out a thirty-foot wide fifty-one. One of them came in at fifty-one, the others were forty-nine and fourteen feet high for the walls. And it would have two doors on either side. So based on that, we came back with the best price would be Quality Building Systems out of Clinton, North Carolina. This would be built to meet the one hundred fifty-five mile-per-hour wind zone. They'd give us the coded blueprint system for the building permit. And then for all of these, except for the Superior Metal Structures, we would have to pour the concrete pad ahead of time. I don't anticipate it would be an issue. We think that'd be around three to four thousand dollars to pour the pad ahead of time. And I think that's something we can probably accomplish if we're given the okay to proceed today. So what I'm asking for is for the board to consider selecting Quality Building Systems as the company to supply and install their new Public Works buildings and to authorize the town manager in consultation with the town attorney to enter into a contracted quality building system. And I know Alex isn't able to join us today. This is something that Alex and I have discussed extensively about the specs of the building and what would be a best fit for them. And based on those conversations, based off their site conditions over there, I think it's really important that we get a building that's fully enclosed. Simply because of the fact of the amount of dirt and dust that they contend with over there. They're constantly having to sweep out the shop as it is now with the amount of dust that blows in there and coats everything. They also have a lot of wildlife and other things that cross through that site. So being able to keep the snakes and everything else out and the other animals would be very helpful. We've got a lot of materials and things that really do need to be stored inside. For instance, the sleigh that was donated by Ryerson Unlimited. I think it's not treated wood and currently it's sitting outside. So that's not going to last us for too long if we can't get things like that fully enclosed and inside out of the elements. And so that's what our recommendation would be to go with a fully enclosed building to serve their needs based off of the site conditions that are over there. And we had put thirty-six thousand dollars in the CIP for this year. So we're coming in below that thirty-six thousand dollar threshold. So I'm hopeful that we'll be able to move forward on getting this building in place. Another item I wanted to point out is in terms of storing our military banners and our Christmas decorations and everything else, we'd like to be able to put those inside and get those nicely hung up on the wall so that they don't wrinkle. Probably seen some of them have a little bit of a warp to them as they go up over Memorial Day weekend. So as we get more and more of those banners in, it'd be great to be able to store those out of the elements and store them in a way that they're not going to wrinkle and fold everything else. And one other point I wanted to make, and this is just going off of the conversation with Alex. You know, another concern for us is the site conditions over there in terms of security. We don't have a fence around the site. We just have posted no trespassing signs. So the more equipment and materials that we can get inside and get it to a place where we can lock it up and secure it, the better. And from a liability standpoint, the more that we can secure these vehicles and equipment, I think it's really important for us to do so. You know, especially being right there adjacent to a daycare center and everything else. And just with general people wanting to come on the property, the more things that we can bring inside and have them adequately secured, I think it's in our best interest in the long run to do so, so that we're not, you know, worrying about people coming in there at night. There have been issues with steps there in the past with people breaking in. Since we installed the cameras, we haven't had any issues. That's not to say that we wouldn't have any in the future. So the more stuff we can bring inside and secure it properly out of the elements, I think it's definitely in the best interest of the town. So we just ask the board to consider selecting Quality Building Systems as the company for this project.
All right. Thank you, Zach. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion because I want to go into discussion on this.
Okay. If I get a second, then we'll discuss it. Okay. Thank you, Jim. All right. Well, I'm just going to go down a line of how I see people on my screen. So anybody have any discussions? I'll start with you, Jim.
On the concrete flooring that you're anticipating, I noticed one of the bidders here, I think, talked about twelve-by-twelve footers. And then you're talking about a six-inch floor. I'm assuming that you're going to need the footers in addition to the floor.
Yeah, yeah. The footers on the outside will be those twelve-by-twelves. And then either a four or six, four-to-six inch pad. I think since we'll be doing the work in-house and probably having like a local concrete contractor help with that, we would probably go with the six inch just for the durability of it. You know, the more concrete there, the better for the heavy machinery and everything else. But there'd be twelve-by-twelve footers on the sides and then a six-inch concrete pad for the remainder of the building.
Okay. So you guys are going to do the forms for the footers?
Yeah, no, that's something that Alex used to do concrete work back before he worked for the town. So I think between him and we've got a couple of local contractors, I think, will be able to help us with that. We can have all that in place and ready to go. So then the company brings in all the materials, delivers it, and constructs it to meet the code, to the building code and to the wind zone rating.
So and you think you can get all that concrete work done for four thousand?
I'd say probably yeah, four thousand to five thousand because I mean, the more we can cut out labor costs. And that's going off of, if we did a four inch, I think it was eighteen square yards is what it came out to, or eighteen yards. And then if we were to go to a six, I think it went up to like twenty-eight yards. And that's at like a hundred, a hundred-something per yard. Yeah, we should still be within that thirty-six thousand that we budgeted. Especially since the price would be twenty-nine, so we should be fine with what was put in the budget.
Okay.
Okay, Don.
My first question is, when we discussed this last, you said this is going to be placed, I believe it would be on the south side, the opposite side of the building from the Aquatic Center. Is that where it's?
Yes, that's correct. So it'll be on the side closest to where the substation is for Carter Craven Electric. So the opposite side from the Aquatic Center. And they've already got the site all cleared off and prepped. It's graded and ready to go. So they've cleared all the trees around that area, you know, to prevent for any future storm events or anything like that. So that's the site's all squared away and ready to go.
Okay. My second question is, you're requesting quality building, obviously because they're the low bidder. However, the first three are all like real close within a couple of hundred dollars. You said it qualities from Clinton. Where are the other two, East Carolina and Superior Metal? Where are they from or out of?
I think East Carolina might be Jacksonville. I think Superior is out of Beulahville, I want to say. So yeah, they are very close. One sort of deciding factor in that recommendation was that with Superior, they didn't build the sales tax into that price. But Quality Building Systems did build the sales tax in. And so at the end of the year, we request reimbursement from the state for our sales tax. So we'll be getting back over a thousand dollars and that'll reduce that Quality Building Systems price essentially by that amount. So that makes them much more competitive by doing that.
And you may have just answered this with Jim because I couldn't hear everything. But if we go forward with this, what kind of timeframe are we looking at as far as first getting the concrete laid and then them coming out and starting and completing?
Yeah. So one of the conditions was that I told them they would have to have it installed by June thirtieth because we can't cross over into the next fiscal year with the work. So I'd anticipate if we were given the okay to proceed today, we could probably start on the concrete this week. And then what I would do is notify them right after the meeting that we're planning to proceed and then they can get us on the schedule. They felt that they could get in here and have it constructed. They say it takes about two to three days to actually construct it once it's been delivered. So but definitely the sooner we get on the schedule, the better to get it in this fiscal year. We don't want any of that work to cross over into the next year. That can be problematic for us on an audit if we, you know, have something that crosses over into July.
Okay, that's all I've got for now.
Okay. Steve, comments?
Can you hear me, Zach? Can you hear me, Zach?
Yeah.
First comment I have, you make a good car salesman. I tell you, I'm all for doing a building for Public Works, but I'm not comfortable with Public Works in any way, shape, or form, ability to lay off the building, to do the concrete work, to dig the footers, none of that. I'm very uncomfortable with that. And there's just too many should be okay with this certain amount of money. We need to be definitive about exactly what it's going to cost. This is taxpayer money and we need to be down to the dime. Some other things on this building, Zach, there's no electricity in this estimate. Is that correct?
Yeah, they don't do any electrical work when they do the install.
Okay, but we're fooling ourselves to think that we're not going at some point in time have to ante up for electricity in that building. And that's a huge expense for an enclosed building. Everything's got to be running conduit, metal conduit, underground to the building, another service perhaps. Also, in your roll-up doors, every building has to have an apron. And I don't see that apron on each end of the door going in and out. I don't see that in the estimates either. It's just, I want to support a building for Public Works, but well, this information is just too iffy for me to, at this time and to support it. I just don't think we're capable of doing concrete work to that extent. That's a huge pad, Zach. That has got to be perfect. It's just too many, too many things can go wrong there. I know Alex is poor concrete and he's be okay on sidewalks and stuff like that, but this is a major, major effort. And if it's screwed up, then we're in trouble. That's all I.
And Jeff, comments?
I mean, having a building for Public Works is a really good thing for them at the beginning due to the amount of equipment that you have for protection of the equipment and other needs as well. I do have a couple of concerns about the construction as well. Question for that would be with the concrete, it would have to be at least six inches thick reinforced. And again, have you done, laid in a manner to where it wouldn't be cracking in the future? Again, we all know that it's not about will the concrete crack, it's when will it crack? But there's a lot of what would have to be done with that, which, that being said, will be the cost that concrete would be a little bit more than what's anticipated. That is if the Public Works would have laid the concrete. Again, that's a lot to be in tail for that as well. I believe we do need to look at the cost of the electric on the side of that building as well with the other needs for that building because I don't want to see us put up a building that's not going to be complete. Now, if there's a succession plan as far as, yes, we're going to be building up in the next, after July, we'll be able to implement some more money to put electric in, that's another thing. But I don't know what everyone's thoughts is on that. But I do see that there is a need for this building. I will say that. I am for that. But we need to look at a little bit more the definitive cost for that being spent in the building as well. I don't want to see any surprises with that coming up. That's all.
All right. Mike, you got any comments?
Yeah, yes. I'm not supportive of building at all. We have a forty-by-sixty building already, which totally enclosed with electricity and an office and all the things we need in there. What we need is storage. And if you look at any farm or business that does mostly outside work, we need a shelter for a, two tractors, a backhoe, and maybe put the ninety-four truck in there to get them out of the weather. It wouldn't require a pad. And I agree with Jeff that that's going to have to be at least six inches in rebarred reinforced concrete in order to, four inches will crack immediately with the weight that you're going to put in it. You also have to take into consideration how you're going to see in there with the building unless you put windows and/or a lot of electric lights. The final thing that makes this, this is for storage of equipment. And when you put equipment inside of a building where you have to go out the door, you know, you generally have to move stuff. And then the operator has to get off of, out of the truck, open the door, bring the truck in, close the door, and sometimes move something. Basically, what we need is what like L.B. Page has over there, a three-sided building, which would require a footer, a complete footer all the way around. But where the vehicles are could be crushed marble just leveled out. And I think that's what we need and not a building since we have a forty-by-sixty building in place already. That's all I have to say.
I've got one more brief comment, Mayor.
Right ahead.
I think we've made our rounds. Zach, you mentioned that we would have to move on this because the money would need to be spent in this budget. But that capital outlay has been laying in there for years for that building. Is that correct?
Yeah, we have it in the CIP for this year. I mean, it will continue into the next year. So if the board wanted, what we could do is if we needed to add any additional amount to reflect electricity or other provisions of the building, then we could always wait into July and do it in the next fiscal year if we needed to add a couple of more items in there. I think the idea was to go ahead and if we did it, if we were going to do it in this year to get it done, and then in July, go back and handle any electrical work or anything like that. But when they pour it, they could go ahead and pour it with the conduit and everything in place so it could just be run through there. But we can wait until July if that's what the desire of the board is. And I guess that would be where I just want direction about the specs or the interest in what y'all want to see in the building. I mean, ideally, you know, we'd have at least a six-inch concrete pad, overhead lights, maybe some electrical outlets in there. And I think that would be, you know, sufficient for what we're trying to utilize that space for. But just wanted to get direction on this item because this is something that's been talked about now for several years. And that equipment that's sitting outside is definitely deteriorating from sitting out there. And not to mention that as we get more and more stuff that is being stored over there and we have some large items like that sled for Christmas time, you know, those items really do need to be brought inside. So we definitely like to move on it in the near future if we can. If we need to wait till July, that's not going to make a huge difference. It's just going to be in the next budget year. So if we need to go up on any of the estimated costs, then we can do so and reflect electrical install and everything else if that's what the direction of the board is. But I guess that's what I'm seeking today is if the board want to move forward in this year or if we want to go back and revisit this in July with those additional measures installed, such as the electrical conduit. And then, as you mentioned, the pad on both sides of the roll-up doors, if you wanted to see those priced out as well.
Well, this is where I stand on it, Zach. I would like to see a quote, not an estimate, a firm quote, and take Alex and Public Works completely out of the picture. All three of those companies have their own concrete crews that do these slabs. We're going over our head on this and I can't be more adamant about it. Concrete is something that's tricky. You got a, I was saying, you know, a concrete worker, he don't even stop for lunch. He's got to babysit that concrete. We don't have any of the proper tools. I would like to see a quote on electricity, aprons, the building and the concrete, firm quote on that. And I'd also like to see an estimate on the building Commissioner King's proposing, the same length with whatever bays, four to six bays. You've only got two John Deere tractors, a Massey Ferguson, and a backhoe that require to be in and out of the weather, Zach. Things like this reindeer, they can be left in the storage container we have outside with the rest of Christmas decorations. But those are two things I would want to see before I commit. That's just my feelings on it. Thank you.
I got one more comment, Mayor.
Right ahead, Don.
I said I made the motion because I wanted a discussion on this. And I wanted to hear from a couple of people here that know more about buildings than I do. And I've heard kind of what I thought I would. We've talked about, this has been talked about for a while, and we know that we do need some type of building out there at Public Works. But I think we need to make sure we're getting exactly the type of building we need and that it is done correct. I mean, everything from the concrete to electric, and I agree with Steve, we need a definite quote. Once we know for sure what we're going to do and what's going to be in there, then we need a definite quote of what it's going to cost us to do it and not all the estimating. And I definitely don't think we need to be throwing up a bill and come back and put electricity in it later. And I agree with the concrete. The concrete is down. It needs to be done right and it needs to be done by professionals that do this every day.
Any other comments, gentlemen?
Mr. Mayor, I just have one more thing, please.
Right ahead.
With the pad, just to let you know, maybe you want to let Alex know, but down at S.D. Wooton here, they sell in the crushed concrete for fifteen dollars a ton, which the concrete makes excellent for whatever needs. It's very cheap. So that's something that I do know that Alex and could put down a lay for future buildings or shelters, whatever case may be. So that's just something to think about.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Hi, it's Patricia. Am I allowed to speak?
No.
Not yet.
Hang on, I don't think we're open for public discussion yet.
Okay.
Anybody else on the board?
Yeah, Mayor, Mike King. I think that a shelter building, like most farms and other businesses that have outside equipment like tractors and backhoes that are keeping it out of the weather, I think that would be well less than half of the price we're talking for this building. And I'd like to see an estimate also.
Okay. Well, from what I'm hearing in the numbers, I see this, I don't even think we need to continue with the vote. The consensus is we need to look into this a little further. And I will just add my comment to it that, you know, I think if we're going to do a building, we need to do it right. And I tend to agree as far as some of the concrete comments is the workmanship should be guaranteed and that way if we do it with a contract, it could cost a few more dollars. I'd rather do that and have a warranty on the work. And then the professionals can come back, take care of it. We may need to pay more for this building, but I'm in the sense of my Public Works background, I'd rather have it enclosed. I'd rather do it right. Let's put doors on it. We may have other things we need to put in there in the future. Let's don't look at just right now. Let's look down the road and get the electricity in there as well. So I would say we'll table this till next month. We can afford the money if we have to. Look at everything. We may want to have added to that as well.
Zach, can you get back to us with all of that before we vote on this current budget or during the current budget we're operating under? So in case we need to want to do a budget amendment or something.
So are you to do it in this year or to do it in the next fiscal year?
I'm just asking, how long is it going to take you to get those quotes for what you've been asked to? A couple of days, a couple of days or something?
Yeah, I'd say probably at least a week. It takes a little bit of time to get all this stuff back.
We got a month in this current budget, so whatever happens, I mean, but.
Yeah, my recommendation would be if we're not going to move forward today, would be to wait until July. And then let's talk about this at some board meeting in July. Once we have all this information together, I think if we don't give them notice today to move forward, I think we're going to be cutting it too close. And I'd hate for it to run, you know, from this fiscal year into the next halfway complete. And then we get a note on our audit because of that. So I'd say if we, we'll plan for the July board meeting, have all this information pulled together. What we'll do is spec it out with electricity and everything else in place, a turnkey kind of building. So the cost might be a little bit higher, but that way we're getting everything at the same time that needs to be in there and that needs to be part of that building. So I'm all for that approach. I think that's the best approach that we can take. I think we're trying to work within a tight timeline and within this budget to come in a little bit on the lower side. Did I agree with the comments that if we can get a professional crew to come in and do it, I think that's definitely in our best interest in the long run. It's going to cost us a little bit more though, so we just might have to go up on that CIP amount. So we can adjust that. If need be, we could adjust that in July and go up on that CIP line a little bit more if we need to. Although we do have, like I said.
Zach, my question is why wait and do a budget amendment in July? We're working on a budget right now. Why can't we do it now instead of in July if the board wants to do the building with electricity and we know it's going to cost more in the concrete? Then we're doing a budget amendment, you know? We're always doing, we're budget amendment capital of Carter County. I mean, why can't we do it this month while we're working this budget?
If you want to incorporate it into this budget, we could definitely do that as well. I don't know that we'll have all that information in time. We need to have the public hearing on the budget by June tenth. So we're under a relatively tight timeline to get all this stuff turned around, but we could certainly.
I wasn't thinking about the June tenth deadline. I'm sorry. Okay. Stand corrected.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, yeah. There's no way to turn this around, you know? I'm strong on feeling that we needed a three-sided shelter rather than a building. But aside from that, procedurally, we got a motion and a second. We either have to withdraw. But aside from that, procedurally, we got a motion and a second. We either have to withdraw the motion and entertain a motion to table, uh, to finish this thing out.
I I agree. I agree, but I just want to make sure we were through discussing it. Uh, you got any more comments, Mike?
Uh, no, I'm good. I I I think either, I think Don made the motion, he'd have to withdraw the motion and then somebody table it or uh, or go ahead and vote on this thing and then get another motion to table.
Right, so the 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 easiest thing is like you say, we just get Don to withdraw the motion, then we move forward.
I withdraw the motion.
Thank you, Don. Okay. Moving forward.
All right, I move, we table this item till next uh, uh, fiscal year.
I'll second that motion. Shall we vote? Okay, all in favor? Uh, please state your name as you vote.
King, aye.
Okay. Jim?
Aye.
Hey, Don?
Don Miller, aye.
Hey, Steve? Steve, yes. Jeff?
Jeff, yes.
And Mike?
Yes.
Okay, so table it is.
All right, so we'll plan for that to be on the agenda in July. We'll have all that information then and uh, be ready to discuss it further then.
All right, next up, you have the discussion of the Part F grant.
Yep, that was just an update that we submitted all that information on Friday. Um, so it's been postmarked in the mail. Um, we're requesting the maximum amount of five hundred thousand dollars um, uh, from from that grant. Uh, so we'll just see how it all pans out, but we've got that all put together and sent in. Uh, today was the deb bond to get all that in, so we're, we're good on the deb bond. And uh, hopefully we're successful in that um, in that grant application. That would definitely help significantly with reducing the amount, if the bond referendum is approved, it would definitely reduce the amount of that bond, which would be um, very helpful for us in the future. So hopefully we're successful in that endeavor and uh, we'll see uh, see how it pans out. Just to give a general update on on where we're at on the cost estimates and everything, I know I just saw an email come through um, that John Freshwater's working on the, he's still working on the engineering and design and everything. And one of the local contractors is going to be looking at the current design and verifying that the estimated price is within um, what we're anticipating. Um, but I think it's going to be a little bit higher than we originally were discussing, uh, because the amount of boardwalk for the trail is much longer. And we're looking at about three hundred, three hundred dollars uh, per linear uh, foot um, for those boardwalk sections. So that's a little bit higher than the around thirty dollars or so per linear foot of asphalt. So um, should have uh, hopefully some more updates on that soon. Um, once John gets uh, some of that information back from that contractor to verify. Uh, we've also been in contact uh, with the local government commission. Um, Sandy had reached out last week to them. Uh, and so we're moving forward on that process, um, and getting, we have to submit an application to them for the bond referendum process. So um, we're working on that as well. Um, so just wanted to provide that brief update of where we stand.
Anybody got any questions or comments for Zach on that subject? All right, if not, then we'll move into the exciting part of the budget.
All righty.
All right, so I think there were like three or four key elements everybody was uh, discussing. We had some options on, so Zach, if you want to go through those. I noticed you had the A and B.
Yes, so we set it up like two different budget scenarios, um, based on whether or not uh, we were gonna go with the enterprise fleet management program or if we were to buy vehicles outright. So um, also, we updated a couple of items, which I've highlighted in yellow throughout the the budget. So in governing board, updated, um, the sympathy and recognition items went up on on that amount. Um, Johnson Environmental, uh, which was the disaster services that we're doing in-house now. Um, zeroed that out. Do we have some cost savings there? Um, updated the, got the amounts in there for the planning inspections, um, and police department hybrid position configuration. Um, and then based off the two scenarios, if we were following the capital improvement program, this would be our outlay. Um, as option A would be the outlay towards uh, future Public Works vehicle purchases. Um, versus option B, which would be to go for the enterprise uh, fleet management system. So that would be the cost difference if we're following the CIP, um, versus following the, um, or going with the enterprise fleet management. Um, with the enterprise fleet management, we would be getting a new Public Works truck in that first year. Um, I believe we're a little bit further out in the fee, the next purchase in the Public Works Department under the CIP plan. Um, this would be the line, the transfer to CIP, um, for the Public Works building. And we actually had, I'll have to check on that, but I think we had put away more funds in this last year. Um, so we might e- we might not even need to do anything in July. We might just have to consider uh, which company to go with without having to do a budget amendment if that's the case. Um, uh, over in the police department, um, we updated the vehicle repair and maintenance cost. Um, so that's adjusted slightly. Option A would be, um, if we were to purchase a, purchase a new vehicle in this upcoming fiscal year. Um, so we're putting, we have ten thousand in the CIP currently. This would be putting aside an additional twenty-four thousand to give us thirty-four thousand towards the purchase of a new Dodge Charger. Um, and then that would be our anticipated vehicle maintenance cost under that um, concept. If we were to go with the leasing program through enterprise, um, this would be our cost would be twenty-four thousand, two hundred forty-nine. And we would see a decrease in our maintenance cost because we'd be getting two new vehicles into the fleet. Um, so that would go down to eleven thousand, seven hundred eighteen. Uh, the property valuation, um, numbers were, this is based off of the most recent numbers we got in from the county. There's a couple of appeals, I believe, that are still outstanding, so that might fluctuate slightly before the public hearing on this proposed budget. Um, but it should be, this should be relatively close to the number we're looking at. The local option sales tax, um, we updated that amount based off of what we received this year and taking ten percent off of that for potential COVID nineteen impact. And then the utilities and uh, utility franchise tax and the cable franchise tax were both um, updated as well to reflect what we're anticipating in terms of the decrease for COVID nineteen. Um, so that's kind of a run through of the two different options. Um, obviously the, which direction we go on the enterprise fleet management program is going to determine um, some of these final numbers. Um, so that's why there's two different options to compare, the anticipated budget impact. Um, updated the CIP as well to reflect um, some of that. Um, so you can see the light green would be years, like if we're following the CIP, the light green would be years that we're building up to the purchase and that um, brighter green would be the year that those would be purchased. So for the Public Works Department, the next purchase would be until FY twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, in the police department, there would be, if we put that twenty-four thousand aside, we replace vehicle number two um, in the next fiscal year, and then we would have additional police car purchases until FY twenty-three, twenty-four, following the schedule. And we'd be looking at in the next fiscal year, um, after twenty-twenty-one, we'd be looking at twenty-one thousand, six eighty-six, forty-three, three seventy-two, and then fifty-four, two fifteen. Um, also put together a spreadsheet that shows based off of the average miles per year for each of the vehicles. Um, you know, this is a, I think this is helpful when we're considering how soon we're going to have to replace some of these vehicles. So looking at FY twenty-twenty-one, that vehicle number two is going to cross that hundred thousand mile threshold. Uh, so we'll be at a hundred, four thousand, eight hundred fifty-seven, um, based off of the current usage. Um, we are generally seeing that when they cross that hundred thousand mile um, threshold, we are seeing more maintenance issues um, that are popping up. Even some of them are having maintenance issues before we get to that threshold. But definitely after a hundred thousand, we're starting to to see an uptick in the things that are going wrong. So that's just one consideration. I mention that because in FY twenty-one, twenty-two, we have then four vehicles that would be um, crossing a hundred thousand mile threshold. And then two vehicles that would be in the ninety thousand range. In the FY twenty-two, twenty-three, you can see all of our vehicles except for one would be over a hundred thousand miles with, if we were to not purchase something in this upcoming year, with vehicle two would be a hundred fifty-eight thousand miles. Um, vehicle three would be a hundred forty thousand, three thirty-two. Um, vehicle six would be a hundred thirty-two, seven eighty-five, and vehicle seven, one twenty-nine, nine thirty-one. So I'd anticipate in FY twenty-two, twenty-three, our maintenance expenses would be fairly significant um, in terms of how much we would be paying to try to keep the fleet uh, maintained. But I highlighted the darker red, our years when um, our years when we would need to replace it. So you can see in the next year after that, like on vehicle two, the mileage would go back to the average yearly mileage of twenty-six thousand, six twenty-one, and then continue to build up from there. So this kind of puts it into perspective in terms of what we're looking at on the timeline. Um, the lighter uh, red or the pink color shows when the vehicles cross the hundred thousand mile um, threshold. And that's really when we're going to start to see some significant uh, cost in terms of maintenance. Uh, I think what's concerning is that if we stick with the current plan, you know, we're going to be in FY twenty-two, twenty-three. Even FY twenty-one, twenty-two, we're going to have four vehicles that are over a hundred thousand. But in FY twenty-two, twenty-three, I mean, we're looking at seven vehicles that are over a hundred thousand. Um, and that's, that's going to be, I think, significant in terms of, you know, our maintenance expenses and the reliability of the fleet. So I just, just something I want to point out, um, just as we look at the CIP and how we're planning for the future. Um, I think that's definitely a consideration that we all should keep in mind is that um, we might not be having issues now, but in just a couple of years, we're going to be faced with significant issues if we don't find, you know, a solution that replaces them a little bit sooner. So um, that would take either putting more money aside in the capital improvement uh, program each year and being, you know, willing to commit to more funds going towards that CIP each year, or it would be going with like a fleet maintenance leasing program, um, like the enterprise program. So just wanted to point out those two uh, future um, challenges that we might be encountering uh, further down the road. And uh, be happy to answer any questions on that item. But um, like I said, I, I think it's important in the budgeting process that we, that we look towards the future as well and make sure we're putting aside sufficient funds, um, to be able to address those future issues that we perceive that we're going to encounter um, in just a couple of years. So um, be happy to answer any questions y'all have or or however the board wants to on on each of these items.
Zach? Zach, can I say something? Or just remind you to say something? That currently we are about five thousand dollars over on our maintenance budget in the police department. And I think that's something that's probably important for everyone to know. So even though we have budgeted ten thousand, eight hundred this year, we, we've gone over, we've spent about fifteen thousand right now. So that, that's a pretty important thing to know, that it's probably only going to get worse as we go if we don't do something different.
Yeah, that's a good point. I mean, it's, and with it being a relatively, I mean, in terms of mileage, it's a relatively young fleet or, you know, middle-aged fleet, I guess you could say, for how many miles we have on them. Um, but those are already our maintenance costs with the fleet we have now. So I mean, you could probably at least double those when we start getting everything over that hundred thousand mile range, if not triple those numbers, um, with, with the future uh, issues that might arise. So um, and one other item I wanted to mention is that we did get a public comment that was submitted to us before the meeting. Um, we don't have a public comment period on the agenda. There is a public hearing that'll take place on the budget um, that has to take place before June tenth. Um, however, uh, I just want to mention that for the board and and for uh, the mayor. Um, I don't know if y'all want to entertain on that this meeting or if, or how you want to proceed on that. But that was from uh, from Ms. Holt that submitted a, a comment. Um, and so I don't know if you want to provide a period for that or not, um, or if you want to uh, wait off until the uh, public hearing on the budget.
Well, I, there again, this is sort of new ground for everybody with the virtual meetings and everything. And that, that's my biggest concern is making sure that people who want to speak, you know, have that opportunity. So uh, Patricia, if you're still on here, I can't see everybody, but I'd like to give her a chance to speak at the end of the meeting. And uh, if if Ms. Holt wrote something, if you don't mind, uh, go ahead and read that. Or if you want to wait till, oh, we get to the end, we can uh, read her comments.
Yeah, I can, I mean, I think it's real brief. I'm, and sharing Sandy, you can correct me if I, if I misquote it. But I believe what she said was that she wanted to see more than two uh, leaf and limb pickups per year. So that was her request. I think that was the extent of what the comment was.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, well, I think proceeding what we all do probably is is, like I say, we've got these three, three or four issues and we can get a consensual consensus on them as we go through. But uh, just get some comments from everybody, and I think I'd like to start with the chief because this is his department and see if he has anything he'd like to add information or comment wise, and then I'll give every board member an opportunity to speak as well.
I think Zach pretty much covered it all. I did present him uh, with the fact of idle hours that um, for instance, the uh, high mileage vehicle, seventy-six thousand miles, uh, had with the current um, idle time that these vehicles, uh, the period for which they idle on on per shift, um, adds to that vehicle, uh, adds another one hundred and seventeen thousand miles to that vehicle, uh, at the rate of thirty miles per hour of idle time. So the, these vehicles are being utilized by the guys and they're out and active. So uh, as they are doing so, we also had that same vehicle in the shop this past week with an unexpected maintenance cost. So um, I just want to reaffirm that uh, it's important that we do make a move in some direction. Of course, I do favor um, the leasing program because it keeps our vehicles in top-notch shape. And uh, I think overall saves the town a lot of money. And it's uh, we represent the town and we want to, we want to keep our vehicles uh, in the best shape that we possibly can. Also, dependability, it's in, is significant also.
All right, chief, thank you. Well, Jim, you got any comments? We'll start with you.
All right, Jake. Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Something wrong, something wrong with my machine here, but I'm getting myself some echo.
I'm getting myself to the echo. As far as the enterprise goes, I, I prefer not to use the leasing. I would rather do it the way we've been doing, adding to the improvement plan.
You still, you got any other comments, Jim, other than that?
Yeah, the, yeah, the hybrid position is one that I have a lot of grief about. I understand that we're going to have two and a half days of inspections and two and a half days of fleet ops. That is because you're splitting up the cost fifty-fifty. So is the time going to be split fifty-fifty?
Yes, I'd anticipate that we'll be evenly allocated. And I think chief can speak to that as well. You know, we're currently functioning in that same configuration that it would be if this is approved in the next fiscal year. But basically, right now, this is a test run of that position. And I think it's been working very well. A particular individual that occupies that position is, is working the Police Department, I believe today and tomorrow, and then we'll be doing code enforcement later this week. It, it's worked out perfectly so far, and I don't foresee any issues. Chief and I have a great working relationship. And we, it's not like a bigger city where I think that this will be more of a challenge because we're a small town and we have to be resourceful with our resource, with our finances and just our day-to-day operations. I think it lends itself to allowing this type of position to exist. Whereas in a big city, I could definitely see some of the issues that would arise where you don't have department heads that communicate on a daily basis like we do. And then we see each other every day. And, you know, generally, you know, we, we work out issues on the fly and don't, don't typically run into issues. So I think we have a, a very good, a very good relationship between all the departments. And that lends itself to allowing a position like this to exist and to provide some cost savings to the town and the process.
Main, the main problem I have is, is the idea that when in uniform, when on a cruiser, he's still going to spot and want to do inspections. There's got to be a complete and total separation between those two functions. That is to say, he cannot be using a uniform to do inspections. Even when he's off duty, he should not be wearing a badge to do inspections. Give him some kind of credentials from the town, but inspections are not a law enforcement job. And if I was satisfied that there was going to be no crossover, I would be much more supportive.
Yeah, I think we can definitely, I think we can make that assurance that we could make that delineation when it comes to the inspection side. The, the code enforcement side is, is a combination of that can be a law enforcement function. It could also be a civil function of the inspector. But the majority of our ordinances read that the chief of police has the authority to enforce a lot of our nuisance provisions and other sections of the ordinance, which is kind of where that crossover is. But in terms of the inspection side, I'd agree that that line would be drawn in terms of if he's going out to inspect a new shed, don't, don't necessarily need him to be in, in a police uniform. He'd be in his regular attire, wearing his code enforcement badge for that, for that event versus being in police uniforms. So that would be the, there'd definitely be that distinguish, uh, distinguishment between the two.
I have a question on revenue. Schools have been closed, I know, for two and a half months, done for the year. Are the communities still contributing to the SRO stipend?
Yes, I believe, and I'll let Sandy speak to that too. But yeah, I believe everybody, I don't know if everybody has, but I think we perceive the majority of the, the funds for the SRO position from the other town. I think maybe the Palateer contributes, Sandy? I think you're on mute.
I was getting the exact figures. I forgot my mic was not on. I'll tell you exactly who and how much. Let me pull it up.
I assume, I assume the SRO is working as a full-time officer last two and a half months, right?
Zach, that is correct.
Right.
And to answer your chat, to answer your question, Commissioner Nalitz, the county has contributed six thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. The town of Cedar Point has contributed two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars. And the town of Emerald Isle has contributed two thousand, two hundred and seven dollars. So I think the only one who did not contribute that we sent to was, Zach, is that Vogue? Is that the only one? And Palateer, Palateer did not.
I think Pal, yeah, Palateer, I think did not contribute. They haven't historically contributed either.
Palateer is the only one that, since I've been here for the past three years, Palateer is the, the one that does not. Everybody else does.
So they've been contributing to the SRO, who is actually our full-time police officer?
Well, yes.
Okay, that's it.
Hey, Don, comments?
We'll get back on the vehicles. We, we definitely need to do something going forward as far as vehicles. That, that worries me when I look at the, at the next couple of years and the mileage on the vehicles, especially getting into twenty-two, twenty-three, when I'm looking at six vehicles, all of them over a hundred thousand miles and a couple of them over a hundred and forty thousand miles. I, I'm telling you from experience, I know people are going to say, you can drive these cars a hundred and fifty thousand miles, a hundred and seventy thousand miles. When you get up in the, once you cross a hundred thousand miles with these police vehicles, especially when you start pushing a hundred and thirty, a hundred and fifty thousand miles, you're going to be looking at serious maintenance issues. When I first got to this department back in two thousand and eight, I think at that time, they had two vehicles that were fairly recently bought, which were all in good condition. The rest were all old and with a lot of miles. And for about the first three years that I was here, it, it was a scramble trying to keep these vehicles running until we finally started getting new ones cycled in. I think we, whether we go with the enterprise or whether we go with CIP, I mean, we, we definitely got to do something. I could, I could probably go along with trying out the enterprise. I, I'm uneasy just because I've never, I have no experience doing it. I don't know, it kind of sounds good on its face, but I don't know. And I, and I think this came up before when they gave their brief. How, how many departments in Carteret County are currently leasing vehicles? Do you know, chief?
I know Emerald Isle is participating in the program and very happy with what the outcome will be eventually on those savings. I'm not sure about the other departments at this time and point. As, as far as I know, possibly Commissioner Waters might have a clue on if there are any other departments that are utilizing it.
You know, Almelo County is also utilizing it. They're one of our close neighbors that was utilizing the program.
Because I, I guess my follow-up question on that, what would be directed toward the chief is any agencies? And you mentioned Emerald Isle. I, I'm interested in knowing from the chiefs there, do, do they, are they happy with, with that type of program? Are they happy with what the results they're getting with the vehicles? But you say that you have to talk with Chief, Chief Reese?
Chief Reese, and if Zach can correct me if this is not correct, but I believe that Chief Reese would be willing to also speak to the board in reference to the program. It is new to Emerald Isle that money is going to save the town over the next several years.
I also did speak to Chief Reese about it, and he highly recommended it, not only for the vehicle, but the vehicle part of it, but from the money aspect, because I was very, very concerned from the budgetary and from the finance aspect. Because, I mean, I spent an hour on the phone with this guy and I went through every penny, every charge, every fee, because y'all know how I am. And I really made them lay it out on the line for me because I was, I was a non-believer in leasing also. And I have to tell you that I, I was really pleasantly surprised with it.
Also, I might mention Chief Reese is very detailed with everything he does. And he doesn't just fall into something without researching it very thoroughly. So if, if you have more interest in it, I would suggest possibly having him come and just show exactly on paper the program and the amount of savings it would represent for the town of Emerald Isle. And ultimately, if we chose to go that way, what it would save us is, I think it's a good idea to possibly have him come and speak in reference to that. One of the other issues, and I've been back and forth with Zach, we, we, we don't even know when another Charger will be available for purchase. I spoke, I spoke with the Services Association and some of the dealerships, and they don't even have a clue when the next Charger will be back on the market and available for purchase.
Okay, Mayor, that's all I've got right now.
Okay, Don, Steve, comments?
Yeah, quite a few. First off, chief, just to, just to expand on what you, the comment you just made about the Dodge Chargers. If we're not getting that good a service out of the Mopar, why do we stick with them? Why don't we try Ford or Chevrolet?
Actually, the, the Charger has proven to be the most reliable vehicle on the market for law enforcement and the most economical. You have to look at the context in which these vehicles are utilized. And they, they live quite a life in the law enforcement in field.
Okay. I'm going to start off and make, I got a lot of comments I need to make here. First off, the worst thing you can do is, 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 is do what was done in the past that we can't correct, and that's buy an entire fleet at one time. They need to be staggered, need to be staggered because what we're facing now was and having to come up with some solution is because of the way it was handled in the past. That's in the past. Another thing that, that bothers me is, as you all know, two years ago, there was virtually no maintenance records on those cars. I haven't checked the maintenance records on them since you, chief, have been in charge of maintenance. I'm assuming they're properly maintained, but I can only assume. I haven't checked the records. Maintenance is the life of a vehicle. I did call, Don, I did call one of the commissioners in Emerald Isle this morning and asked them what they thought about the program. It's my understanding with that phone call that the Police Department at this time does not have enterprise cars. Is that correct, chief? Zach? The commissioner told me all they had at this time.
It is a new program.
I? I was told all they, all they had were four-wheel-drive beach, four-wheel-drive beach vehicles at this time, that they hadn't, they hadn't gone.
That's my understanding, yes. But that's what, and that's what their goal is, is to stagger the vehicles and bring them in in increments.
Okay, well, I, I was just trying to answer Doc, Mr. Miller's question that you, you, you can't get a, any advice from Chief Reese because they don't use the enterprise cars at this time. Is that correct? Okay. Zach, how many miles did those two cars that you got from Emerald Isle, how many miles did they have on them now? Over a hundred thousand?
Yeah, they were in that hundred thousand range.
Okay, that's another question I have. Why do we think, and, and I hate to bring this sore subject up, but it goes back to the backhoe, when the backhoe was put in the budget to be purchased, and then it was struck down because it was perceived that it had life still left in, in it, which is fine. But I don't want us to be perceived as hypocritical when we talk about replacing police cars that have life left in them. I do understand we need to continue, we need to do something immediately with that one car. But I don't want us to be perceived as being hypocritical. What, what wasn't good for Public Works is, you know, doesn't apply to the Police Department. But we can't correct things that's happened in the past. It's like maintenance and buying all these cars at one time. I mean, we all know that it exhausted our hurricane fund and whatnot. We've had work to get that replenished. I'm, I'm going through my notes, guys, just give me time. Another thing, they're, they're talking in this leasing about replacing over four years. Well, four years, thirteen thousand miles a year is only fifty-two thousand miles for a four-year span. You take it to eight years, it's only a hundred and four thousand. So it only makes sense to me to continue to buy the police cars and institute a, a, a maintenance program like we have and stay with it. And, and another thing is Enterprise is saying if, if, and it's, it's underlined here in their quote, if Cape Carteret were to replace all its vehicles, we're only saving forty-eight thousand dollars in an eight-year span. And that's, that's their sales pitch. I, I doubt that. I think it would end up costing us more in the long run. There's no maintenance provided on the police cars as you, as we were told. And Zach, I want to say that I'm a no-go on your enterprise thing. But on your budget A, and I asked my fellow commissioners just to look at this, just give it one minute of your time. If budget A, if you will take the capital outlay from Public Works that Zach has at eighteen thousand, four hundred dollars, and make that figure six thousand and ninety dollars, it will balance the budget. And we could immediately buy a police car and the hybrid position. So that's where I'm at, just one simple mathematical change on that line, and I'm good. And I tell you, the reason I say that is because the Public Works vehicle is not due to be replaced until fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. So I'm a no-go on, I'm a no-go on the leasing. However, I will, I would like to see us get back to our capital outlay, buy the chief a, a car immediately during this upcoming budget year and concentrate on keeping our vehicles up a little bit better. And that's where I'm at. That's one mathematical change, and I'm, I'm a go on, on your budget A, Zach. Sorry, I ran it. See you.
Is that, is that all you got, Steve?
For now.
Okay. All right, Jeff? Jeff, you got any comments?
I think you say in one moment.
I was having problems with my computer getting back on. One question for Zach on this. In your opinion, is the fleet lease program? Uh, one question for Zach on this. Can you opinion is a lease program better cost effective than a purchasing program to the capital out?
Based off our analysis of it, I think it would be more cost-effective on the leasing program side. I mean, I, I'm admittedly skeptical of that, of any leasing program. And, you know, like Sandy had mentioned, that she did spend a good deal of time talking with him and went through line by line of all of their paperwork and charges. I do think that, you know, that would be in our best, that'd be our best option in terms of if we could get two vehicles rather than one in the first year for a comparable amount that we would put aside in the CIP to be able to purchase something in that first, in this first year. But either way, I think, I think we know that we do need to be just looking towards the future. You know, looking, looking at the three years out. If, if we don't, if we're not more diligent on acting on some of these things with updating the fleet, I mean, we could be looking at if, if those vehicles went down in three years. I mean, we're talking about thirty-four thousand dollars a vehicle, probably over two hundred thousand dollars in capital expenses in one year, which would be a huge expense to try to, to try to address in one year. If we, if we wait off. So that's just something, you know, that, that sticks out to me that, you know, looking into the future, that that can be a, a problem for us. But yeah, in terms of comparing the two, you know, I, I think either way we go, the biggest thing is that we need to be making strategic investments and we need to be looking at addressing our future issues, not just these current budget year issues. But, you know, I do, I do think that we've, we've done our due diligence and done our homework on this Enterprise program and everything that we've seen has been positive and, and has been, has looked like it would be something that would be good for the town. And like I said, if you get two vehicles for the price of what one would cost in this first year, then that would be a, a better deal on that. But, you know, I admittedly, I, you know, I'm skeptical of any leasing program, but looking at all the, looking at the line by line, I haven't seen anything and come across anything that gives me reason to say that this wouldn't be a good program for us. And then also hearing from some of the other towns that are involved, I've heard nothing but positive feedback from them. So it seems that everybody's experience has been positive with the program. We had just heard from the town manager in Liberty, who is another small town that had gone with that program and had a very positive feedback about the Enterprise program. And I believe in Emerald Isle, I, I was under the impression that the police department was going with the program, but I guess maybe that's not till the next fiscal year. I don't know exactly how, how that is. But, um, I know that, that Matt Zap, when, I believe when he was in Benson, I think they were using the Enterprise program. And I have talked to him about it and got his feedback and opinion and that he's very supportive of the program and speaks very highly of it. So I would just, you know, my biggest point would be regardless of which route we go, I think we do need to be looking at what, we do need to be strategic about planning for the future for the fleet. Because I don't, I, we can't wait off three years and then be stuck with the two hundred fifty thousand dollar capital expense in one year. I mean, that would, that would be catastrophic for us. So that's, that's just something, that's, that's why I point that out is that now's the time to be talking about this and to be planning for the future rather than when we get there and have to figure out how to come up with that kind of money.
Okay. Um, I have to agree with, um, Kenny also, Commissioner Miller pertaining to the life expectancy of these vehicles, actually when you start hitting the eighty to a hundred thousand mile mark, the maintenance costs will definitely start increasing to a point of probably losing a vehicle. One of my concerns about the vehicles that are already on the roadway is that when you do have a vehicle to go down, the vehicle's off the road and that officer is with that vehicle due to more maintenance. Therefore, when an officer has to go back on duty, he has to take the vehicle that has already been on the road for twelve hours already. Now he's fixing to put in that additional twelve more hours on that vehicle, which is going to cause more wear and tear in that vehicle, which again can cause more maintenance issues. In my experience, when you start hitting those marks, the maintenance costs will definitely go up and it would cost quite a bit of money to replace these vehicles at a spur of the moment because you definitely do not want to be without a vehicle for your officer to respond calls. To go back, to look at a comparison between a backhoe and a full car is beside me. I don't understand how we can even compare such a matter. A backhoe is a tractor. When a vehicle that also has used to respond to calls is a matter, could be a matter of life or death, not a backhoe. That's, that's an own side note. But I am, I am for this leasing program because I do see the need. I agree with you, Zach. This is not what we're looking at right now, but what we're looking at in the future of spending money for cars that is going to come up. I, I assure you it's going to happen and we don't need to be caught without these officers or even the public works people without a vehicle to go out there to do their job with. You're only as good as the tools you're given to work with. I encourage you to look at these numbers and, and, and consider this as a lease program as an asset for the future for the police and the town as well. I also did a little bit of research with this. I didn't want to look at right here at Emerald Isle, which I have talked to those folks as well. They're all about a leasing program. They're, they're about it. Went out further. I said, okay, this is right here, but let's look at western part of state. Let's talk to somebody that we never hear nothing about. So looked at that list and I saw Shelby, North Carolina. And I called them and I asked them to shoot me an email pertaining to their leasing program and I asked them a few questions and their, and the answers were to these questions were such as, oh, you, oh, you got the leasing program? And the words were, oh, absolutely. And I said, well, would you kind of elaborate on the reasons why? And they said, well, it's easy. We get new vehicles, easy replacement when something breaks down. But let me read the email to you that they sent me. I asked them to send me an email pertaining to the pros and the cons of the leasing program for their department. The pros was major drivetrain repairs are handled by a lease company reduces our maintenance costs. Major auto body repairs are handled by the lease company. Fleet vehicles are replaced after a predetermined amount of mileage. Keeps frontline cars in good shape. The undercover cars are changed once a year. That's a whole other side, another point. The cons with this program is having to budget for cars every year. Well, you'll have to do that anyway, whether you purchase it or not. And again, they're very excited. They've, they've had it now for a couple of years, or maybe three years. But again, I, I resell it if it gets more information other than what we're hearing right here around our area. And I think this is definitely a need for this town. It's definitely a need for the police department. There's also a need for the public works and administration in the years to come. I don't want to go forward with our purchasing program with this because it's, it's going to be detrimental in the next three to four years and it's going to cost the town a lot of upfront money to perceive of buying the vehicles. I, I remember when the town before went and bought all these vehicles upfront and that's why they're in the position they're in today because they had all the new vehicles. Now the miles have caught, caught up with them and now the maintenance costs is almost, has doubled. So there you have it. That's, that's black and white for you there as well. So I hope what I've said is encouraging for you to maybe think otherwise in moving forward with the leasing program. This is a need for the town and not a won't. It's, it's, it's going to happen, folks. I hope you just be mindful with it. That's all I have.
All right, Mike, comments?
Yeah, actually, there's really two issues and I don't know whether the, the car leasing and also in the police department, we're talking about things that increase the staffing from seven people to seven point six when you take the hybrid part of it. Zach said fifty-fifty, but it, in my experience, it's more been like two days of code enforcement and three days in policemen. So we have a staff increase. I'll deal with the car leasing first. First of all, Enterprise cannot buy the cars cheaper than us. They're using our buying power to buy them. That's where they lose their value. They, they can't, they can't get them cheaper than us. If you look at the proposal, maintenance is not included. And everybody knows that when you go to aftermarket cars, fleet cars sell considerably on the secondary market or the retail market, far less than privately owned vehicles because of the condition that they're in. And people buy leased cars, well, it's not my car. It's not maintained well. So I don't believe the resale value of the number that Enterprise proposed to us. I've done this analysis in college of fleet leasing versus buying. We got a town that's only a mile by a mile and a half, and if you take average of thirteen thousand, these cars today easily run two hundred thousand miles. Now, everybody's gonna say, well, they don't run two hundred, but they do. Private entity runs them. They run diesel vehicles a half a million miles, getting the value out of it. What happens is if you trade in four years, you're gonna eat the depreciation which happens in the first four years. If we keep them eight, the depreciation drops considerably. So I am, I, I've never seen a leasing program which you've got a middleman making money and they have no buying advantage and no selling advantage at the end of it for us. So there's no way I can support a, a leasing program. I do agree with what Mr. Martin said, Commissioner Martin, that we made a huge mistake when we bought, what was it, in two years, just about our entire fleet. We ought to work to stagger and get them on eight years so we buy one every eight years. It's going to take a long time to get there, but that, that's where I'm at on the car leasing. Okay, the second item, this hybrid officer, I'm not supportive of this hybrid officer. If you go back and you look over time, I'll just give you some numbers. The budget for the police department was three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars in thirteen fourteen. Today it's five hundred and seventy-seven and it's been as high as six hundred and twenty-four thousand. I would be willing to bet in terms of safety, this town, if they had a way of ranking them, is probably one of the safest communities in, in, in the country. I, I don't lock my car. Half the time I leave the keys in it. We used to continually operate with five to six officers. We were at eight and we cut back to seven with the agreement of the former chief that we could go to seven. And now we're going, we're sneaking it back up. We're going from seven to seven point six officers in the police department. And you will know that, talking about one other item in there, the, the SRO officer, we have paid the lion's share of that cost for ten years now. Some of the other towns contribute, others don't. That is a county school and a county-made function, yet we continue to pay it and our neighbors, some of our neighbors don't, don't contribute to that. We also have in that police budget, this canine for six thousand dollars. That will never go away. What, what we've got is a, is a dog that is a, is not even town property and we have three K nine units in the county. And why aren't we, why don't we donate the dog to the county? Or why don't we use the county's K nine as, or their SR unit? I've been serving the town now for almost twenty years and we have, the issue I have is we've never been able to do the things I want to the streets, the roads, the culverts and the parks that they make this place a nicer place to live because without raising taxes, we can't do it. And I just see that increase in the size of this police department, when we brought it from eight back down to seven, is just going directionally in the wrong way. I do agree that of the hybrid concept where, in fact, in the early days, that's exactly how it was. If you will read the ordinances, the police department, police chief enforced all the code, did all the code enforcement in the town. So I absolutely agree with Zach, but I would do that. I would agree with the hybrid concept long as the next time we lose a police officer, we return our police department to seven, not to seven point six. So unless, unless we can agree to doing that, I'm a no on the hybrid officer. I think I, let me look over my notes here a second. I think that's it, Mayor.
All right, well, just the consensus I'm getting is pretty much no on the lease and about half and half on the hybrid. Would y'all like to vote on the, the issue as we go? Better get a consensus.
I think in the, I think in the past when we had disagreements on issues, actually we went line by line, but at this time, it's my feeling, we don't need to do that. I think the primary issues are, in my mind, the hybrid position, number one, whether we continue to buy our police cars or lease them, number two. And I think since Mike pointed out the K nine, we probably, in my mind, need to vote on that too. And as a matter of fact, I could start out by making that motion, that, making a motion that we, that we table further discussions on this leasing program.
All right, is there a second on tabling the leasing program?
I'll second for purpose of discussion.
Okay, well, we'll discuss it again. Jim?
Generally, I'm opposed to the leasing program and would prefer the CIP procedure.
Okay, Doc?
For the, for the vote, I'm gonna say I'm in support of the leasing program.
All right, Steve?
Yes, the leasing program is a no for me.
All right, Jeff? Got any comments, Jeff? Yeah, I just flipped over. I was able to see he's holding up sign. He's for, he's for the lease. Okay, so Mike, that brings you up.
I'm against the leasing program. Yeah, and the question I had, I didn't know whether it was just a yes or no vote or a tabling vote. I guess in this particular case, it doesn't really much, make much difference, but I'm not supportive of the leasing program.
Stand for, well, everybody sort of voted in their discussion. It was three to two to table it. Make it official though. We'll just have everybody vote. So I'll just call your name and then just say yay or nay and Jeff, if you would, just put your sign back up. Jim?
Okay, this is a vote to table.
Correct. We're table, we're talking, this is specifically about the leasing program to table it till next fiscal year.
Nail its hearts, yes.
Okay, Don?
No.
Steve?
Yes.
Jeff?
Not, uh, uh.
Mike, can you hear me?
Yes.
So that's a yes?
To table it.
Okay, ten four. So that's three to two. We're gonna table that. All right, the next subject as far as was the hybrid officer in the budget. So I have a motion.
Mayor, can I insert something here?
Yes, absolutely, Chief. Go right ahead.
One of my top notch officers, whom you all don't see very much of, John Eschbach. I spoke with him one on one just over a week ago, and he said the pressure that has been taken off of him by having a midshifter with him out here is tremendous. And officer safety, I will fight all day long for officer safety. And I know some of you are not aware of some of the things that go on out here that occur. I've had two officers get tangled up with an individual about three weeks ago and ended up in a fight on the ground. And it's very significant that we have that officer also for training purposes to keep the morale. And it takes a lot of stress off of scheduling to have that additional. If it's the point five officer, it is very important and significant to have that, that officer in place.
All righty. Well, we'll do, I think the best thing to do would be to do the, we'll entertain a motion as well for whether we're gonna table it or consider it and vote on it. Do I have a motion for this position?
I move to do this position.
You broke up on me. Jim, what was the motion?
Motion was to approve the split position.
Okay, so so Jim has made a motion to approve the hybrid position. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And Don's second, and we'll open it up for discussion. We'll start again with you, Jim. Do you have any comments?
Based on the insurance assurances from a manager and the chief, I would, I would approve it.
Okay, Don, do you have any comments?
While I would prefer to see this department back with eight positions, because I do believe that they do need a mid shift every day. As as a second option, I'm in support of this. I initially had the same concerns that Jim brought up last time about one person doing two separate jobs and them getting intermingled. And I still have some concerns. I want to ensure, I want to be assured that that's not gonna happen. But as far as if if it's either a matter of staying where we're at, seven, and that's it, or or eight, or this is in between, that I'm in support of this.
Okay, Steve, comments?
I've I've always been in support of this position. I think Zach knows that, the chief, but I I do have some some comments. Zach, I need to know from you what days of the week Mike Bishop will be in town hall performing zoning business?
So that's probably going to fluctuate based off of the TD schedule. I mean, we'll try to stick to, if it's a Monday, Tuesday, he's in town hall, or a Wednesday, Thursday. But we'll shift those around accordingly. The whole idea being that we can shift around based off of what the PD scheduling is. But in terms of the days that that I need him in there, that can fluctuate. He's able to accommodate those meetings and everything. But typically, the chief does a schedule, a month long schedule. So we're able to have all that in advance and be able to work out which days are which. And then when people call, if they want to set up a meeting or inspection time, then we'll know what days we're able to do that on.
I just, my biggest fear, and and again, I'm I'm probably gonna say yes, but I I think these questions need answered. My biggest fear is if is if, you know, just say it's his day to be in office and all of a sudden one officer's calling sick. I I just want to be sure that his time is shared between the two positions. And I know this is a unique position created for him because of his capabilities. But I want to make sure that that one of the other departments don't take advantage of that. And the second thing I want to say is really all we're doing is creating, we're taking the chief, a lot of the chief's part time lot out of money and overtime lot out of money. So he's really getting a full time, part time officer is what it amounts to. And given Mike Bishop's capabilities in both capacities, I'm I'm a firm yes on this move. But if he ever was to leave the town, then I would assume this position would be null and void. Is that correct?
Yeah, so if if we didn't have a qualified individual that could do both, it would be difficult to fill a hybrid position like that with somebody else. And if that were the case, then obviously part time and overtime would have to go up if that were to transpire. But I think this is a unique opportunity for us. And one that I think will will be able to be maintained and sustained for many years to come. But if that ever were to transpire, I think it would be difficult to find somebody that has that dual capability. But we'd have to evaluate that at that time. If we had to go to back to seven, then we would need to go up on our part time and overtime budget within the police department because we would, we definitely be utilizing that part time and overtime like we currently are this fiscal year.
Yeah, well, I'm all for it. And I think I think the department needs that luxury of having having him, having an extra officer available when they when they need it. I I just would never support going back to eight officers. I think I'm the commissioner that made that motion two years ago to go to seven. It gives this town this town has a lot of needs and one department, we can't we can't bolster that department up and neglect other needs such as paving. And I think this budget with that schedule, hey, Zach, I think that's the way to go. But yeah, I'm a I'm a yes on the hybrid. Thank you.
Okay, excuse me. Jeff, can you speak or do you have any comments?
I'm good. I got it fixed now. I'm actually for an eighth position for the police department, but I think the hybrid would work very well for the police department as we stand at this point. That's all. I'm for it.
All right, thank you. Mike?
I'm not supportive of this. I I saw us was serving when we were running with five to six officers. The town hasn't got any bigger. Our neighboring three towns have no police officers, police departments, and you never see Newport Police up in the part of our of twenty four that runs between Bog and Morehead City. You rarely see anybody up there. It's just not, it's just not a high crime issue to me that we have to spend that kind of money at the expense of every other thing in the town. And we voted last year from eight to seven, and now we're going back to seven point five or seven point six, depending on when you want to slice it. I agree that this can be integrated, this function can be integrated into our department as a person that does both. I I totally agree with that concept. But only if it's within the seven officers that we approved last year. So that makes my vote for this a no. The final thing that was brought up by Steve is this, he wanted to bring up for discussion is the canine officer. It's another six thousand dollars. And if, after we conclude this one, if you could bring that one up, Mr. Mayor.
All right, okay, we have the motion and the second, so we'll do the same thing. I'll call your name out just if you're in favor of the hybrid position. Yes or no? Jim?
I'm in favor.
And Don?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And Mike?
No.
Okay, motion carries four to one. Now let's discuss the canine. So Mike, I think, who who brought that up? Was it Mike or Steve?
It was actually Steve who brought it up.
And Mayor Baker, if I might, can I add a comment to that or provide some additional information?
Sure, go right ahead.
I just wanted to add in and recognize, and I might yield the chief as well, that we did just receive another donation last week from a town resident. And Chief, I don't know if you want to elaborate on that a little bit, but but that was a significant donation towards the program. And they also expressed interest in making future donations to or organizing people to help keep this program as a donation driven program. I'll let Chief expand on that.
Yes, we had, I won't, I won't pronounce, I won't call her name out, but we have a local resident that came, she was concerned that this program might be discontinued. And she walked up to me and presented a six hundred and fifty dollar check on behalf of Draco to, for continued training. And I'm not sure if Zach did the clarification letter, did you send that out?
Not sure. I'll have to go back and check. Although we did send that that one from Creighton Canine out. And one other thing, I think that was mentioned earlier, I wanted to clear up in terms of the who has ownership of the dog. The the dog is the property of the town. So we do have ownership of the canine. I just wanted to clear that up. Another statement earlier on that.
I don't want to stick my foot in my mouth, but the the expense, most of the expense for Draco is in the past. So that figure, it can be adjusted and because all that will, all future training and updates will be provided after his initial qualification. And so all we will have thereafter are the small cost of medical expenses for Draco, and we should be good to go. So we we could adjust that.
One more thing I want to say on it is that, you know, hopefully Draco being able to enter into service in the next several months. I think it would, I think it'd be great if we can see how this program pans out and give it a shot. Right now, you know, we haven't had an opportunity to see the canine unit in action. We haven't been able to see the benefits from it because he's been in training. That's something I'd encourage everybody to consider is to let this program see, let's see the benefit of it and see how it works. And obviously, before we would move forward in the future on getting another canine, I think that that would be a good opportunity to discuss whether to continue the program or not. But I think, you know, let's give it a shot to be successful and see how it goes, especially with the amount of community support and donations that have been given. I think it'd be great if we could see how, see how the program works and then evaluate it, even if we need to revisit it. Hopefully, by the next budget cycle, we'll be able to, hopefully, he'll be in in service by that point. I would anticipate that he would be. And we might have a clearer picture of how the how that program's functioning. But just with the amount of community support for it, I think it would be great if we were able to defer any decisions on that until a later date to allow the program an opportunity to succeed. And then obviously, before, in the future, before we move forward on any canine, future canine officer or future canons, that we would reevaluate the program at that time. That would at least give an opportunity for for Draco to go to work and to see how how the program functions and maybe have some successes out there in the field, which then, you know, a decision can be based off of. But right now, I think it's difficult to evaluate the program without having seen him in action. So like the chief said, I'm hopeful in the next couple of months that he'll be able to be brought into service. And then by this time next year, hopefully, we're able to talk about some of the successes of the program. And so, you know, maybe a couple of successful traffic stops or busts or other things. Or maybe some tracking that went on if there was a missing person. So just just wanted to throw that out there and and contribute that to the conversation.
All right, Steve, you wanted to, you wanted to discuss, so I'll start with you for any comment.
I think what I, I think what's appropriate this time, Mayor, is I want to make, just to get into discussion phase, I will make a motion for an up or down vote on whether to keep Draco or not.
Okay, so the motion is, is whether to keep the dog or not. So is there a second?
Second.
All right, well, let's discuss it. We'll start, we'll start down the list again. Jim, comments?
You said there are probably gonna be some reduction in that six thousand. Can I guess as to what that might be?
I don't know exactly. But I would say possibly substantially less. I cannot give you an exact figure since his training is not complete at this time and point. So I don't have that answer for you.
Chief, I can tell you that the training at the cost we're doing now a month would be like twenty four hundred dollars for the training. I don't know what else you would need, but the training for the year would be around twenty four hundred dollars.
You're saying, correct, if we continue, but before before the the year, that training will be complete. You're saying it's two hundred dollars per month?
If he had to have it for the whole twelve months, but my understanding is it would be over before that year. So I don't think it would be that much.
Can you tell me the balance that we have with the new donation towards his training that current?
I will. Let me look and I'll be back to you.
Okay.
We might be able.
When when do you anticipate he'll be graduated?
The word is probably within the next he said the fall most likely. We still have to obtain some other items to train him on. So it will, there will be a few more months involved before his training is complete. But he is doing very well with training. I went and observed him two weekends ago, so he's he's doing a good job.
How many do you anticipate him being used during the week? I mean, he's just gonna, he's gonna partner with Sergeant Welding?
That's correct. That's correct. And if there's a need for him or we suspect there's a need, then he would be utilized. Usually, it's gonna be on a traffic stop.
Chief, to answer your question, we're to the good nine hundred and thirty eight dollars and eighty four cents. And that's how much more in donations we have than what we've spent.
All right, thank you.
A trained and certified or whatever you call police dog, search, sniffer is a high value item. If such time we ever had to get rid of him, he'd probably bring more than a used car. I think I'd be in favor of keeping him.
Okay, Don, comments?
When we first had the discussion last year, whether to get the dog or not, I was kind of on the fence with it. I voted in favor of getting the dog. I had some concerns and I was those concerns I felt were were covered, and I voted that we get the dog. And I've been in departments that had dogs, and there's, there are pros and cons to it. In my opinion, the the pros outweigh the cons. We we've already invested money and time into this dog. And from what I'm hearing going forward, the expense is getting ready to go down. I mean, he's he's getting close to being finished his training. We haven't even seen the dog in action yet. I would be totally against at this point in time, just I would be totally against at this point in time, just saying, I throw the money away, we're done with it, let's get him to somebody else. I I think this discussion would be better this time next year when the dog is in action and then we make her, and we see what we are, what we're looking at going forward if we want to keep the dog, but at this point, I'm in favor of keeping it.
Okay, uh, Steve, comments?
Hmm, I think it's unfair to the dog to pull the rug out from under him when he's in the middle of his training. It's kind of like uh when we, some of us went to boot camp in Marine Corps. I mean, we were given every opportunity to prove ourselves, and uh I think we owe that to the dog. Uh, however, uh, when the chief says the expense could be cut, uh, I'm asking Zach, I guess part of, I want to keep the dog and give him a chance, but I don't want to see a six thousand dollar line item on this button if it's not needed. I would propose that we we uh cut that down to two thousand dollars, Zach. We got nine hundred and some in the kitty. Uh, he's almost done his training. Uh, the medical and food and all is donated. Uh, we were on, we we approved the dog on the premise that most of donations uh would uh come in for the dog. But I'm in favor of keeping the dog, give me, give him, give him his chance that he deserves. I think the line item is a little bit uh out of line for right now. I think we need to adjust that down to around two thousand. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, and I think looking at if we've got nine hundred thirty eight dollars uh currently, we're currently nine thirty eight to the good. So that would be four and a half months of training, which I guess would get us to around September. Um, and if it's going to be in the fall, then it might, I I anticipate we'll probably get some more donations by then. So I'll yield over to Chief to see if he feels like we could go, could we do it for two thousand? Would that be enough in there? I know we we will have expenses for some things like on the veterinary side. It's it's going to be a, for some of the things we'll have to pay for, um, and other things are covered. Um, so there will be some expense, but most of the things are done. I mean, the vehicle's outfitted, um, has, you know, all of that stuff is squared away. So uh I guess I'd just ask Chief if if two thousand would be enough. Um, but that would be, you know, a four thousand dollar cut to that that line item, which would help out the overall budget.
I would recommend uh at least no more cut uh than cut it back to twenty five hundred. There's one more major purchase which we would hope to get a donation for. That would be a uh a vest for Draco that he would wear when he's active and on duty. That runs about between five and six hundred dollars.
I I'll be good with that twenty five hundred dollars. Uh, so I guess, I don't know, the the motion was to keep him or not, but I would vote to keep him uh if we adjust that line item, and I think that's only fair.
All right, well, let me, we'll hear some uh comments from Mike, and then we'll go back and uh we can redo your motion.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm just not supportive of, this is something that should be handled in the county. They already have three K nine units up there, officers and trainer. Uh, they're available twenty four seven. Ours is, I assume is resides with the officers handling like most K nine uh units. And I just don't see, other than uh, most of the arrests we make in this town are passed through traffic. They're not citizens from within the town, they're not from issues. We had one uh drug bust in the town here a couple of years ago, and that was handled by the county, uh, by the SRT team. Uh, and we were uh essentially bystanders on that. It's it's sort of like the the SRO, the SRO, we we can have an, I'm fine with an SRO, but the county should pay it and we should pay twenty percent, not the lion's share of it, and that's what we do. We pay the lion's share of that. We're paying the lion's share of this and uh when the county county has three of those units. So I I'm I I'm a no on going forward with this.
Okay, I forgot Jeff. I'm sorry, Jeff. Uh, you got any comments?
Uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I have to echo Zach to what Commissioner Miller said. I feel the same way as he, what he spoke about. Um, uh, concerning the line item, I think you, uh, Zach, if y'all would, just don't put a number onto it right now. Just see what the numbers would would pan out to be and then issue that number on that line item. I think it'd be hard to drop it down to a thousand, two thousand, three thousand, whatever, until you get the numbers available to see what actually come close to costing for Draco. But moving forward, I think we should have, get this officer K nine an opportunity to show what he can do and then and then move forward after that in the direction we would need to take.
All right, thank you. So I guess to do this properly, we need to have uh Commissioner Steve to withdraw that motion, maybe rephrase it to say that we will uh simply reduce the budget line item for the dog. How does that sound?
Okay, that that sounds good, Mayor. What I what I would do now is uh is withdraw my motion to put it up for an up or down vote uh to keep the dog and modify my motion to read uh up or down vote to keep the dog based on a, the chief's uh recommendation of a twenty five hundred dollar line item.
Okay, is there a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Don and Jim did it about the same time. Any more discussion, gentlemen? Just speak up.
Again, I would say that we need probably wait, Chief, until you get your number definitive before we lower that number down to twenty five hundred because you don't want that number to come back to bite you. So we need to look at that, uh, until you get those numbers specific, because I think you can play that that number dangerously if you don't.
Okay.
I'd make the comment that this, it's like anything else, uh, Commissioner Waters, like uh that we could do a budget amendment like we did with the BICO and whatnot. Uh, if the chief came back to us, but for budgetary uh issues, the chief just just said twenty five hundred and and I think he's probably pretty close if you add the donated money that 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 he has. So that's where I stand.
Well, I would say, uh, if he's up for that number, I'm good. I just want to make sure he is comfortable with it as well, that's all. But yeah, twenty five hundred, that's fine.
I'd like to leave the door open if there if there's an unexpected expense um that we could come back to the table with it at that time and point. Uh, if there's something unforeseen.
Okay, any more comments? Sure, go right ahead.
Yeah. If the chief is good with the number twenty five hundred, then I'm good with it. He's not, I don't, he's not going to be able to come back, I don't think, with a definite number before we have to close this budget cycle out. If he if he is good with that number twenty five hundred, then yes, it would be just like anything else. Going forward, we we face some unexpected expense, then we would have to do a budget amendment at that time. But I don't think the chief, if he's good with twenty five hundred today, I don't think he's going to be able to come back with a different number in the next, what, nine days, ten days? But I I'm good, if the chief's good with that number, I'm good with it.
Okay, any more comments? If not, then uh we'll we'll do a vote. All right, all in favor of the motion uh to keep the dog and lower the budget line item to twenty five hundred dollars? Uh, yea or nay? Uh, Jim?
Uh, Jim Maylis, yea.
Uh, Don?
Don Miller, yes.
Steve?
Steve Martin, yes.
Jeff?
Jeff, yes.
And Mike King?
No.
Okay, motion carries four to one. I think that pretty much does it for the uh.
Mayor, I have, Mayor, I have one more, one more motion in regards to the budget. I forgot, uh.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to lower the capital outlay, so the bullet, i- i- in the uh proposed budget A and the capital outlay for public works, since that vehicle's not due to be replaced until twenty three, twenty four, to lower it from eighteen thousand four hundred to six thousand and ninety. Uh, but but that being said, Zach, since we lowered the the line item for uh Draco, could we just I'm trying to balance your your proposed A, your budget, and the only way I see doing it is the capital outlay for public works. Like I mentioned at the start of the budget talks, what would that figure be? Uh, what we could just award uh thirty five hundred, so we could add, so it'd be nine thousand five hundred ninety dollars for the capital outlay? Is that what you're seeing? Versus eighteen four? My math's a little slow sometimes. We took uh forty, I can't hear you, Zach.
There you go. So yeah, nine thousand, uh, hundred ninety would be, would allow it to be bud, or uh, yeah, we do. One billion, six thirty two, eight oh three for revenues and expenditures if we drop that capital outlay in uh in public works to nine thousand five hundred ninety.
I think since we've already addressed that the issues that would have changed that budget except for that capital outlay, uh, that's the motion I'm going to make, that we change line item twenty five point nine seven zero from eighteen thousand four hundred capital outlay to nine thousand ninety. Is that correct, Zach, to balance?
Uh, nine, nine thousand five hundred ninety.
Nine thousand five hundred and ninety uh dollars, and the reason for that is because that vehicle is not due according to my sheet uh until twenty three uh twenty four, even if it is at that point in time. I mean, that's something we'd have to meet on if vehicles got more life left in it like the uh BACO does. That's my motion.
Okay, is there a second for that?
Oh, I have a question first, uh pertaining to the uh.
No, we have to get a, but we have to get a second, and I thank Commissioner Waters before we enter discussion. Is that correct, Mayor?
Well, the budgetary is, it is sort of informal, so if he's got a question, he can go ahead and ask it. I mean, go ahead, Jeff.
Um, referring, uh, referring to these numbers, are we looking at the balance in this budget with that? But like, for example, the um, the salaries and wages for the administrations and, I mean, there's, I don't see any raises in there for the, uh, due to the COLA. Uh, is that something that I missed or something, or because I didn't, we speak about the raises for the uh employees? So that's why I see if something's not bouncing out.
That's a good question. Uh, I had asked Zach to put that in there, and I I didn't see it, uh, Commissioner Waters, but uh I I didn't look for it because I assumed he had put it in there.
Yeah, I I believe we we need to look at those numbers as well. I mean, I I appreciate what you're looking there on these, on these other line items, but we got to look at the other portion of this pertaining to the COLA, uh, because we don't want to miss these raises for these employees. I try that on either.
Well, you know, and and that, there again, I had asked Zach point blank if they were in there, including the merit raises, and he assured me they were. Is that correct, Zach?
Yeah, those numbers are reflected in there.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ma- Mayor, this is Mike, as long as you're allowing discussion before a second. Um, you know, maybe, maybe we got to have to have another budget meeting. Uh, maybe if we sent out these updated sheets where we'd have a chance to look at all of this stuff uh again. I know there's only a few minor changes, uh, 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 that might be helpful.
Well, I think the the uh, Commissioner King, that Zach is making changes in real time. Is that correct, Zach?
Yes, that's correct. I I just updated that scenario we just talked about it. Uh, we get a nine thousand five hundred ninety for public works, and that was how we got to that balanced uh figure for the revenues and expenditures.
And I would remind the my fellow commissioners that in regards to uh raises and whatnot, that I had asked for a closed session uh, our first budget meeting, so we we can't, we can't forget that. Is that, is that correct, Zach?
Uh, yes, and that's it, I don't know how the board would prefer to to conduct that closed session. Um, I can uh, if y'all wanted to do it electronically, we can do it. Um, I could set up a meeting room for y'all to go into to do that. If you wanted to do that electronically because of our timeframe, um, or if we're going to do an in-person meeting, y'all could do it then. Uh, but I could set up a separate room. I could even do that today if y'all wanted me to do that and then give y'all the link to go to that room. Uh, you just have to make sure um that, I mean, you'll know if anybody else enters the room essentially. And I'll, you know, I can send it just to the board so that y'all could go into that closed session, but um, it might be, it it just will be.
I'm going to have to ask you to step out, Zach. Uh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that something y'all want to do today? Because I can set that remote.
This, this, this would only take uh about five minutes, I would think. It's just a one, one little up or down vote, I I would, I I would think.
I have, I have one more thing, guys, before we do anything else pertaining to the changes. If I may add that, is that correct, Mr. Mayor, can I say this?
Yeah, go ahead. We we've still got a motion. We haven't got a second on it, but like I say, we're informal at this point.
Uh, with 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 not going forward in the leasing program for the vehicles, with the maintenance costs, it's going to be increasing quite a bit. We're already at, um, Sandy, you say we're already at sixteen thousand? Is that correct for this year?
We are five thousand over our budget. Um, let me get the exact figures for you. Um, I think we have budgeted ten thousand.
Hmm. So in theory, if we're based off this year, it would, we would need to go from twelve thousand eight eighty nine to fifteen, fifteen eight forty five if you just go additional five thousand to reflect this current year. Um, that is with purchasing. I would just add in there that that is with purchasing a new uh Dodge Charger in this fiscal year. But as Chief mentioned earlier, uh, there's a backlog and it doesn't, we don't know when those will be available. So we would almost have to assume at least for half the year probably that we'd be with the current fleet. Um, that we wouldn't be able to get a new vehicle in there. So uh, if if that's the direction um we want to go, we could increase that line item uh to reflect that as needed.
What's your recommendation be, Zach, on that, since we're already at that sixteen, uh, fifteen, sixty thousand dollar mark already?
I'd say, I mean, the error on the side of caution, we we could go up on that a little bit just to be safe, just based off what we've seen this year. I don't think we're going to have any less maintenance issues come up, knock on wood, but you know. But I I don't think we're going to see a decrease in maintenance issues in the next year with the fleet getting older. Um, so you, it it might be wise to go up on that a little bit. Um, just as a safeguard, we could also look at, um, as has been mentioned before, you know, if we leave that amount that's in there now, and then based off of what we're experiencing with the fleet further towards the end of the next fiscal year, we could go for a budget amendment to address that. Um, that's also an option as well if we needed to go about it that way. But just with, as long as everybody has the understanding that if we start to get close to that that number, then we're going to have to do a budget amendment to be able to cover those costs. So this is the two approaches. We could put it in the budget, anticipating that we're going to have that expense, or we could hope for the best that we're not going to have as many expenditures um in the next year and then do a budget amendment if necessary if we end up going over. Um, more, you know, probably a conservative approach would be, I guess, or the safer approach would be to to go ahead and reflect it in a projected maintenance cost.
Well, Zach, if you feel like that's appropriate, then I'm going to have to change my motion. Uh, a- and I think you know what it's going to be. Uh, the only line item I see any flexibility in is that line item I made the motion to adjust uh in efforts to balance. Uh, in efforts to balance the budget A proposal. So I'm gonna withdraw my motion for that and ask that you. Increase the, and make a motion for you to increase the uh, maintenance cost to police vehicles. And adjust the figure on line twenty-five point nine seven zero to reflect. That so that the ballot, the budget will be balanced. You follow what I'm trying to say, or does everybody follow that motion that I'm? Okay.
I will second that motion.
All right, uh, with the second, any discussion?
Yeah, the only discussion I have is, you know, we're talking about a lot of things, a lot of moving around. If we don't have enough time between now and then to relook at these numbers, I know he's putting it up there, but I can hardly read them, they're so small on my screen. Uh, and I just, I like to have them out on paper in front of me, but that's just a personal preference.
I agree with you. I agree with you, Commissioner King, but uh, we we we, but we are gonna have another meeting, I assume, but we're not, so. That's my motion.
Okay, any other discussion?
Okay, so just to everybody know where we're at, if we do that, we would be putting six thousand six hundred thirty-four dollars away for capital outlay for vehicles and public works. And that increases the vehicle maintenance and repairs line item in the police department to fifteen thousand eight forty-five.
Thank you, Zach.
All right, all in favor of that, we'll start with you, Jim.
Uh, Maylis, yes.
Don?
Don Miller, yes.
Steve?
Steve Martin, yes.
Uh, Jeff?
Yes.
I didn't hear you, Mike.
Oh, I didn't hear you call me. Um, yes, I, yes, I'm this, I I've got issues with other things, yeah.
Okay, all right, well, that motion carries in. And so the next issue, well, I guess it was brought up in the flurry there about having a closed session. This, this format sort of makes it a little difficult. Uh, but I guess, Zach, you offered the option of setting up a separate go-to meeting. Uh, I guess we could, you could send us a link too, and we could all pop on there.
Yeah, yeah, I could, uh, I can set that up. The way I would do it is I can email everybody the link to get into that. And then as the meeting organizer, I'll be in there to start it, and then I'll exit and let the meeting run. And then I guess if somebody could, when you're done, you'd exit back out of there and come back into this meeting. Um, do y'all need me, and y'all need me to be in there at all for any of the discussion, or do you just want me to leave after we initiated it?
Uh, Zach, I think, I think what needs to be done is what you said, you you start the meeting, uh, we will ask you to leave the meeting. Uh, when we reconvene, open session, uh, we'll ask you to to rejoin the meeting. And by the way, this, in case you need a subject matter, this is a personnel, a personnel issue. Okay?
Sherry's mic does not work, Zach, so you're gonna give her some direction as to whether she needs to be in there or not, she's not sure.
Uh, don't think so. Uh, the clerk wasn't at one last budget time, but. Uh, well, whether she needs to be, I don't know, but.
I think that's up to the board, isn't it, Zach?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, the clerk has always been in closed sessions.
Okay.
I I was just basing on the one we had last year, Mike, uh, uh. Where Mayor Fowler basically cleared the room except for the commissioners and himself.
Okay.
Yeah, if if Sherry's not in the meeting, then it would just, somebody just needs to take brief notes on on what is discussed. So Mayor Maylis, do you just wanna do that?
I have a problem with her being in the meeting, I just didn't, I'm just basing it on what the experience was last year. So if if she needs to be there, I have no problem with that.
In the past, when I was a clerk, um, you don't have to be in the closed session meetings, Zach, you correct me if I'm wrong. Somebody just does need to take notes, they don't have to be detailed, just who was there and what was passed type thing. Um, and anybody can do that, that's, that's, it's the pleasure of the board.
All right, I'll, I'll alter to that.
Oh, okay, thanks.
And, okay, so I guess what we could do is we can uh, have a motion to exit this meeting while Zach sets it up, and everybody take a break. And come back to this.
Ju- just a moment, uh, couldn't, can we just get the people out of here and stay on? You know, rather than have to go through this whole startup again?
Uh, ask Zach about that. Is that a possibility, is that, if you could just sort of put everybody in a waiting room, just not on the board?
Can, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay, sorry about that.
Could we do that?
Yeah, I missed that last part of the conversation, my call dropped for some reason. Um, so I just switched to computer audio. Yeah, I can set up, so what I'll do is, and I I missed what was said before that, if you wanna repeat it back, so I don't repeat it.
Okay, okay, so we're, we're wanting to go on a closed session, but could we just stay here where we're at, and you can pretty much put everybody in a waiting room?
We could all log off. Can we just all log off that?
Yes.
You wouldn't know when to log back on.
Yeah, I mean.
I would give, I'll give, or the mayor could call Zach's cell phone and tell him when he can log back on.
Yeah, I could do that.
Okay, yeah, I mean, we could. Yeah, we could probably do that, if that's easier, just, uh, I don't know how to notify. Trying to see who all is on here, um, I don't know how to notify the other members, that, I guess Brad Rich is on here. Uh, let's see. Believe Brad.
Anybody could sign on.
Yeah, anybody could join during that because it wouldn't be a secure link, um, cause that link's out there in the public. I I would recommend, um, I can create that, let me go ahead and exit out of sharing. I'll create that, uh, that room right now, and then I'll send that to everybody's email. Um, so, and then after we're done, we'll come back into this meeting. So this meeting, um, that way it can reconvene, um, and the public still has access. That's probably the safest way to do it without bar, you know, I don't, I don't want anybody to be barred out from being able to access it, so.
So what you're saying, Zach, is, uh, will you adjourn, adjourn this meeting and take about, about ten minute break and let you set up the other one?
Uh, so I'm setting that one up now, I would say that somebody would need to make a motion to go into closed session. Um, and then they're, they're making a motion to go into closed session to discuss personnel, have a second. And then, uh, the mayor could say like a five-minute recess to give everybody time to get into that closed session room. And then, uh, and then everybody be back in that closed session. And then once we're done, um, there'd be a motion to seal the, the minutes from that closed session. And then a motion to, um, return back to the, uh, to this meeting. So then everybody would return back to this meeting room.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Uh, I'll make that motion.
A second?
I'll second, I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Jim? Jeff? Don?
Don Miller, yes.
Mike?
Mike King, yes.
Touch your mic on, Mayor.
Sorry, all this button pushing. Uh, so we're gonna go into closed session, give everybody about five minutes, uh, take you a little bathroom break or whatever, get your coffee. And we'll meet in the designated, uh, meeting rooms, Zach's gonna send everybody a link to, and then we'll end up back here after discussion. But I'll text you, Zach, when it's over.
That sounds good, thank you.
All right, and thank you, thank you to all those who are at the meeting or not on the board, we appreciate you, just hang in there, we'll be back. All right. Hey, Jim?
There you go.
Hey, now I can hear you, I guess we'll wait on everybody else, get back.
Well, this is the, not the new meeting. He's, he's got an email that shows us the location of the closed session meeting.
That's why I wanted to see him, and the new one or the old one, cause it wouldn't let me go to the new one till I got the old one, so. I'm seeing which one, but Brad's still here, so I guess we gotta go out of this one and then go into the new one, and then come back, click back on the link via the email. So I'm gonna leave this one and see if I can pull it up.
Mayor, I don't know, let's see.